Hallo, alle. Wie seid ihr? Hi Arusha! Wie seid ihr heute? Ich hätte nicht all das vorher gegessen. Das war gerade bevor meine Tummy egg war. Das ist nicht lustig. Manju. Baby. Wie seid ihr alle? Schreit einfach und geht zu Schlafen. Ist es noch Ramadan? Ist es noch Ramadan? Also du wirst früh für die letzten Mahlzeit aufstehen, oder? Was sind die gebratenen Peper? Ja, es waren gebrannte Peper. Wie die kleinen Chäribell-Peper, glaube ich. Und dann... Ähm... Die großen, langen Peper. Aber sie waren enttäuschend. Wie es nur zwei in dem Paket gab, aber sie waren enttäuschend. Ich habe nur eine gegessen. Und dann... ähm... Die Chilis. Es ist nicht wirklich Chili, aber ich weiß nicht die richtige Wörter. Aber es ist wie salzig. Wir haben die Krimtschale gebrannt. Ich liebe das so sehr. Aber die großen, die zwei großen waren einfach enttäuschend. Ich musste es aussprechen. Muss ich eine liebe Krim... Ah! Arusha! Ja, noch vier Tage. Oh, okay. Also... Soon... Soon kannst du deinen normalen Schlafplan zurückbekommen. Und musst nicht früh aufstehen für Essen. Jalapeno? Ich glaube nicht, es ist Jalapeno. Ich weiß nicht. Wir... wir nennen es Pepperoni. Aber ich weiß, dass Pepperoni in der Englisch wie kleine Sauserschälchen auf deiner Pizza sind. Ist es Manju? Oh! Ja. Oh! Oh, ich habe so viel zu euch sagen. Ich bin spät. Ich wollte 5:00 Uhr starten, aber ich wachte nach meiner Pause um 4:00 Uhr. Und dann war ich so wie "Ja, nee." Nee. Ich starte nicht um 5:00 Uhr. Ich brauche mehr Zeit, um aufzustehen. Also hier bin ich. Hier bin ich. Ähm... Aber ja. Ich bin nur gefangen. Oh. Auch Manju. So süß. Ich war heute im Jobcenter. Es war ein Desaster. Es war ein Desaster. Ich wollte zwei Stunden später aufstehen. Oh mein Gott, ich fühle das. Ich fühle das. Ich wachte um 3:30 Uhr. Und ich wollte um 4 Uhr aufstehen. Wie... Gerade dann, aber dann war es 4:00 Uhr. Und dann... Ja, ich musste heute früh aufstehen. Und ich hätte aufgehört. Ich hätte aufgehört. Für die Anmeldung im Jobcenter. Aber nein! Sie mussten die Straße schließen und ein paar Lichter setzen. Weil es Roadwork gab. Und nur eine Seite der Straße war verfügbar. Also sie setzten ein paar Lichter ein. Und... Mein Bus hatte 20 Minuten. Es war 20 Minuten spät. Well, nein, 25 Minuten eigentlich. Und... ähm... Ich hätte aufgehört. Okay. Also der Bus sollte am 9:30 Uhr ankommen. In meinem Busstopp, wo ich aufstehen wollte. Äh... Weil dann ich 30 Minuten zu den Jobcenter fahren musste. Was eine 10-Minute-Schule ist. Aber nein. Es kam am 9:55 Uhr. Und dann musste ich noch 10 Minuten fahren, um zu meiner Anmeldung, zum Jobcenter. Ich habe versucht, die Dame zu rufen. Ich habe sie drei Mal angerufen. Und... Und sie hat nicht aufgenommen. Als ich da war, ich wusste... Äh... Ich... Sie sagte mir, warum. Weil sie nicht in ihrem Büro ist. Also der Telefonnummer, die ich bekommen habe, ist nicht mehr der richtige. Äh... Aber das ist okay. Das ist okay. Ähm... Aber ich war so wie... Warum hast du nicht aufgenommen? Warum ist... Wie... Warum ist da niemand aufgenommen? Der Telefon... Ich wollte euch nur sagen, ich bin spät. Und ich war so wie... Ich war fünf Minuten spät. Und dann ran ich... Ähm... Die Steuern. Weil es auf dem zweiten Floor war. Und ich musste zwei Steuern hochfahren. Zwei Fliegersteuern. Ich kam auf die erste und dann war die Sicherheit. Und er sagte "Entschuldigung." Ähm... Ja, und dann hat er mich zurückgerufen. Ähm... Und sagte "Ja, nein." Deine Anmeldung mit deiner Dame ist heute in einer anderen Raum. Und dann hat er mich zu ihr gebracht. Aber sie war... sie war so süß. Sie war so nett. Und sie war so froh, dass ich tatsächlich versuche, einen Job zu finden. Offensichtlich ist das nicht etwas, was viele tun. Sie gehen zum Jobcenter und wollen Geld. Aber sie putzen nicht wirklich in ihren功夫, um einen Job zu finden. Ähm... Aber ja. Es ist verrückt. Es ist verrückt. Sie war so froh. "Oh, ihr habt bereits Anmeldungen geschickt." Ich war so wie 15 bis 20. Oh mein Gott, so viele? Ja, so viele. Ich will einen Job. Ich... Ich... Ich brauche Geld, um zu leben, Dame. Ich weiß nicht, wie ihr überlebt. Aber ich brauche Geld für das. At least... Ja. Ich... Ich muss ehrlich sein. Deutschland hat eine sehr gute soziale Struktur. Wir haben den Jobcenter. Und wir haben die... Jobfunktion. Ich weiß nicht, was es hat. Es sind zwei verschiedene Dinge, aber sie tun irgendwie die gleiche. Aber es hängt davon ab, ob du länger als ein Jahr arbeitest oder weniger als ein Jahr. Es ist gespalten. Wir hatten das und es ist wirklich nett. Ich musste einen Job in meinem Heimatland suchen und ich habe Glück. Ich meine, ich habe auch auf mich selbst recherchiert. Umwegen, umwegen, morgen ist der Jobtest. Ich kann nicht warten. Ich bin so gespannt. Aber ich bin auch gefangen, weil... Von der Straße heute. Ich bin gefangen, ich könnte spät fürs Arbeit迟到. Wenn ich nicht sogar wie... Ich denke... Ich denke, ich werde ein Bus früher nehmen. Einen Bus früher. Und dann werde ich aufgehört. Ich werde... Weil der Bus früher geht, weil er durch eine andere Straße geht. Mit keinem Straßenverkehr. Ich werde sogar früher sein. Ja, ich werde viel früher morgen. Weil ich nicht wusste, dass es Straßen... Es gab Straßen. Sie arbeiten auf der Straße. Ich wusste das nicht. Aber jetzt weiß ich. Und morgen ist eine wirklich wichtige Anmeldung, aus meiner Sicht. Ein Jobtest ist sehr wichtig. Also ich werde absolut aufgehört. Ich werde sicher sein, ich bin aufgehört. Es war einfach gefangen. Wie... Ich sah... Wie ich schaue an mein Telefon und sage so wie... Ah! Okay, wir sollten jetzt am Ende der Station sein. Aber... Ich werde stressen. Auf dem Ende... Es war verrückt. Ich stresste auf dem Innern, wie verrückt. Und dann ran ich um, um dort zu kommen. Wie... Google Maps sagt, es ist eine 10-Minute-Schule. Ich denke, ich habe es in ein bisschen weniger als 10 Minuten gemacht. Wie sieben, sechs, sieben Minuten. Ich bin ein schneller Fuß. Besonders wenn ich stresst. Einige meiner Freunde sagen immer so wie "Oh mein Gott, kannst du bitte langsam gehen?" Hmm... Also ja, ich bin immer... Ich bin immer... Ähm... Ein schneller Fuß. Ooh, und auch gestern hatte ich die Interview. Ähm... Ich habe die Interview für meine These gehabt. Ähm... Das werde ich heute tun. Ich werde es in Schrift schreiben. Weil ich gestern es geschaut habe. Und heute... Das ist warum wir heute Gaymusik hören werden. Wir werden keine Poll machen. Ähm... Aber ja. Ich bin wirklich gespannt. Ich bin so gespannt. Um es so... Zu es schreiben. Es war wirklich interessant, um zu sehen, wie... Einige der... Natürlich kann ich euch Details nicht erklären. Aber es war sehr interessant, einige Dinge zu wissen. Und dass diese Person's Ziel ist, mit dem Regierung zu arbeiten, um ein Problem zu lösen. Es ist unglaublich. Am einzigen, der Naps... Was meinst du mit voller Kleidung? Wie kannst du schlafen, wenn du Kleidung hast? Okay, ich verstehe es, wenn du Pyjama trägst. Okay. Ich verstehe das. Aber wie... Ich rauschen sofort aus meinen Kleidung, sobald ich zu Hause komme. Aber wie ich losnehme die Jeans, ich losnehme den Bra, ich losnehme den Shirt. Ich nehme alles los. Und dann nehme ich meine Hauskleidung auf. Um die Tiere zu... Nein, egal wie müde ich bin, ich konnte nicht in den Bett mit Pants. Alles andere vielleicht. Vielleicht, vielleicht. Aber Pants? Nee. Nee. Du musst nackt sein. Entschuldige, Entschuldige. Okay, Naps und Schlafen sind zwei verschiedene Dinge. Ich kann das akzeptieren, aber... Es ist... Es ist die Pants? Ich kann das nicht. Nein. Kleidung während Schlafen ist absolut nicht möglich. Auch so wie... Wenn es zu viel Fabel geht. Es ist... Nee. Nee. Ich... Ich kann es nicht. Ich kann es nicht. Es gibt Dinge, die einfach nicht möglich sind. Es gibt Ausnahmen für die meisten. Ich könnte nie. Ich könnte nie. Aber... Ihr wisst, was eine lustige Sache ist? Ähm... Du wirst früh aufstehen mit all den Linien auf deinem Körper. Wie all die... Alle Fabel, die ein paar Fäden... Wie die Fäden, die ein paar Linien auf deinem Körper haben. Ich liebe das. Das ist irgendwie lustig. Das ist, wenn du weißt, es ist ein guter Napp. Wenn du die Schmerzen auf deiner Gesichter hast. Das ist, wenn du weißt, es ist ein guter. Auch so habe ich euch gesagt, ich habe eine andere Interview gehabt. Ich kann eine andere Person interviewen. Was ist verrückt. Weil niemand antwortete. Und plötzlich zwei Leute antworten. Ich hatte das nicht erwartet. Ich hatte das nicht erwartet. Aber es ist wirklich interessant. Es ist wirklich interessant. Ich habe mir selbst einen schönen heißen Getränk gekauft. Ähm... Vielleicht hilft das mit meinem... Mit meinem Tummy. Weil mein Tummy schmerzt. Es ist nicht einfach, eine Frau zu sein. Ich meine, jeder könnte seinen Tummy bekommen. Aber ich werde nur sagen, es ist nicht einfach. Oh Gott. Oh, Tummy. Ja, Tummy. Euch nicht vergessen, Getränk zu trinken. Oh, ich bin müde. Ich bin müde, obwohl ich einen Napp getrunken habe. Obwohl ich einen Napp getrunken habe. Hi, Autor. Willkommen. Wie seid ihr? Ich hoffe, ihr seid gut. Ein paar Fleischpizzas und Milramilch. Ooh, ich liebe Milramilch. Milramilch ist eines der besten Dinge. Aber ich hätte nie Chocolat gewählt. Ich muss ehrlich sein. Ich habe nie Chocolat gewählt. Weil schwarz-gekelles Macadamia... Das ist die gute Sch*te. Das ist die gute Sch*te. Oder Bananen. Bananen ist auch eine gute Wahl. Bananen ist auch eine sehr gute Wahl. Still arbeitet er... Okay, danke für die Lektion. Oh, danke. Bananen, wir haben Schokolade, Rübe. Du hast nur drei Geschmack? Wow! Oh mein Gott, ihr seid angerobelt. Wir haben wie 50. Ich weiß nicht, ob es 50 ist, aber wir haben wie viele Geschmack hier. Wir haben... Ich werde das Google suchen. Weil ich jetzt besucht. Bro, ich habe es für mich. Ja, aber du hast alle die guten Geschmack abgerobelt. Wir haben... Wir haben acht Grundgeschmack. Und dann bekommen wir immer nur begrenzte Geschmack. Recht? Die... Die Basics für uns sind schwarz-gekelles Macadamia. Raspere. Hazelnuss. Pistasche. Kokonuss. Chocolat. Bananen. Strawberry. Und Vanille. Hi, Yoko. Willkommen. Wie seid ihr? Ich hoffe, ihr seid gut. Sie ist... Es ist auch hier relativ teuer. Meine... Ooh, was isst du? Was isst du? Teilt es uns. Lass uns wissen. Du bekommst Essen? Ich nicht. Oh, ich möchte wissen, was die begrenzte Einladung ist. Jetzt. Ooh! Wir haben Chocolat-Peanut-Caramel. Schwarz-Gekelles Kuchen. Chocolat-Bananen. Und Cinnamon Roll. Das ist unglaublich. Oh mein Gott, ich muss sie probieren. Hi, Hit. Wie seid ihr? Wir sind gut. Hello, das ist mein Freund. Warte, was? Du kannst... Warte, was? Nein, 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 nein. Nein, nein. Du kannst nicht mein Hund essen. Manju ist nicht... Manju ist nicht Essen. Nein, 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 nein. Einige Krabbe aus dem Meppensoup. Ich werde euch nichts dazu sagen. Ich werde euch nichts dazu sagen. Ich boop euch. Was machst du jetzt? Ich werde euch auch booppen. Ich werde euch auch booppen, Hit. Was machst du? Wir reden noch, und dann werden wir studieren. Ich bin gefangen, mein Auto. Keine Hunde sind Essen. Keine Hunde sind Essen. Keine Hunde sind Essen. Wie viel ist Milramilch in Deutschland? Wow, das hat überhaupt nicht funktioniert. Wie viel ist... Oh! Es ist tatsächlich recht billig. Ich habe immer gedacht, es ist teuer. Es kostet wie 60 Cent. Ähm... Ja. Offensichtlich war ich falsch. Hi, Treffy! Ich... Ich dachte... Ich dachte, es war mindestens 1,50. Ich dachte, Milramilch ist teuer. Offensichtlich. Offensichtlich war ich falsch. Offensichtlich war ich sehr falsch. Ich kaufe es nie. Weil ich sage "Ja, das ist zu teuer. Ich brauche es nicht." Ich muss Geld sparen. Aber offensichtlich ist es nicht teuer. Es ist... Es ist sehr afforderbar. Es ist wie 59 Cent. Nicht vergessen. Oh, richtig! Es ist Spaß. Oh, shit, ich habe es vergessen. Ach, ich hasse das. Es wäre einfacher, es einfach in den Müll zu werfen. Suche mir ein Faktor. Nein, ich habe recherchiert. Ich habe den Preis auf Aldi recherchiert. Ich habe auf den Preis gegoogelt und dann habe ich auf der Aldi Website gecheckt. Und Aldi verkauft es für 59 Cent. Wie die 400 Milliliter Bottles. Ja. Es ist offensichtlich viel billiger als ich dachte. Aber ja, es ist auch Spaß. Aber dann... Auch dann ist es weniger als ein Euro. Ja, Spaß. Wir haben nicht... Es ist neu. Spaß auf... Auf Milramilch ist neu. Ich denke... Seit letztes Jahr oder zwei Jahre. Es ist noch nicht so lange. Aber ich brauche Spaß, um ehrlich zu sein. Ich kann es einfach in den Müll werfen. Wisst ihr? Es ist einfach... Sturmt. Nur stupide. Okay, also ich muss... Trans... Transcribe. Ich habe keine Ahnung, ob das der richtige Begriff ist. Und dann muss ich eine Interviewfrage bekommen. Und... ähm... Recherchieren. Und das werde ich heute tun. Die lange Liste wieder. Wir haben mehr Dinge als nur eine auf der Liste. Ist das verrückt? Oh Gott, mein Mund läuft. Es ist... Ich hasse es. Ich hasse es einfach. Auch so können wir unsere kleine Freundin wirklich schnell ändern. Ähm... Ich will... Ich will diese kleine Freundin. Sie ist süß. Und ich will die Krimo. Perfekt. Perfekt. Wir haben unsere kleine Freundin zurück. Also seid ihr alle produktiv? Oder seid ihr nur, dass ich über euch kämpfe? Ich weiß, Autor ist produktiv. Was über die anderen? Huh? Ooh, und auch so... Ich werde euch die Gaymusik geben. Ich werde euch wieder cozi machen. Ich habe keine Ahnung. Well, vielleicht... Ihr müsst es nachdenken. Ihr müsst es nachdenken. Ihr müsst alle sehr produktiv sein, wie ich. Mein Internet. Oh! Ooh, das ist nicht gut. Du sprichst von Finden. Du willst Clips finden? Geh für es. Geh für es. Willkommen zurück, Hit. Willkommen zurück. Willkommen zurück, Treffy. Willkommen zurück. Oh wow. Und dann nicht. Dann nicht es. Dann nicht es. Aber ich werde... Ich werde studieren. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna go study now. Um, I will see you guys in twenty-five minutes. What does that mean? What does, what, what does what mean? I will see you in twenty-five minutes. And, and please be also very productive. Use this time to get your to-do list done.
...
Guys, I'm gonna be back in one moment. Uh, my doorbell rang. Um, I put it on pause, so don't worry if I'm not back in, I dunno, 5 minutes or something. Don't worry! Okay guys, I am back! My neighbor wanted to, um... Get his package, um... I took in. I'm gonna do break time now! Um... Yeah, I'll try to be around with you. Yeah, life, life happens. Life happens! Ah... Um, let's go over here... Hi, Head! Hi! I'm gonna put the mic from right here. Hmm... Great, now I'm cold! Ugh, it's cold outside! And then the staircase, the staircase outside is very cold. Now I'm freezing! Now I'm freezing! And my drink is cold now! My drink is cold now! That's so sad! It makes me sad. So, have you guys been doing something? What happened while I was gone, huh? I mean, in chat was nothing happening, but... Did you... Have you been good? Do you behave? Those are important questions. Those are very important questions. Like, very, very important! I mean, meatballs still have noodles in them. Okay, okay, I'm intrigued. Did you send, did you send the picture to showroom? Uh, no, no, to showroom, to food? I think you didn't! How dare you? I showed you my snack! And you did not show me yours! Even though my snack looked really ugly. And gave me a tummy ache! It's certain, so you cannot see it. Oh... You have to show me all the food. All the food, not just some. All of it. I'm curious to see. Yeah. I still got my tummy ache. I hate it. I wish I did not have my tummy ache. I have some spaghetti. Ooh, Head! Head! Can I have some? Can I have some? I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have oat pancakes, but I don't want, I want, I want your spaghetti! I have girls that have photos of you for... Yes! Well, not every time I eat, uh, every time I go out to eat. Because my food at home is ugly. But you have to send the pictures, demon. You have to send it. You have to send me the pictures. I mean, for what is the food? Like, we got the food channel. You have to use it! Yeah, if you can... Ah! Yes, I can. Look guys, that's how you do it. Head is sharing his food with me. Sharing his food with me. That's how you do it. That's how you get your streamer to be happy. Yeah. That's exactly how, how it's done. You... We got it, we got it, we got it, we got it! It kinda looks good. Listen, I kinda want that now. Are you eating that with a small spoon? Are you eating that with a small spoon? Chips? Oh yeah, you gave me tips, that's good. Uh, yes, I would like some Parmesan. Just, just a tiny bit. And I would like some, some Gouda. A lot. And you were saying something about it before. No, I got bigger. Okay. Are you sure? Because that spoon looks tiny. That spoon looks tiny! But yeah, I'm gonna go back to study, so I will see you soon! But yeah, I'm gonna go back to study, so I will see you soon. Break time. Break time, um, give me one second, give me one second, give me one second. Give me one second, I have to delete something. Perfect. I'm sorry, I did not mean to downplay your efforts in making a fake lion demon, I'm sorry. Hi Lucund, welcome in, and hi Tauro, welcome in, how are you guys? And don't worry about being late. Don't worry. You're okay man, oh, oh, yeah. Just suck your... Three for me, what do you mean three for me? And I still don't believe you that the spoon is normal spoon sized, it looks like a teaspoon. I do not trust it. I do not trust it. Mm-hmm. Do not trust it. Imagine being like... You just see, ah, no, no, Manju is on my lap, um, the camera doesn't see her anymore. She was being tracked earlier, like when I was glitching out, that, that was her, that was her. Just come to conclusion that she could use... I, no, no, I use regular spoons! As in the line is referring. Go grab your spoon, grab it, get yourself a spoon. Get yourself a spoon. And yes, the line is real for you, I know, I know. We won't forget it anymore, right mods? The, the, the line will be, um, will be made. We believe in the line over here. It's, it's a very important thing, mm-hmm. Praise the line. We won't forget it. I think everybody is doing alright so far. Also we're close to this part. We're pretty close, um, I think next study session we're gonna check that. Very close. This, this one does not have any priority. Oh, I did that. I forgot, I did the research already. This one does not have priority today, but tomorrow it will have. Tomorrow is probably no stream guys, I'm gonna do this part on my own, can you believe that? Doing studying without you? Who would have thought that that was possible? Who would have thought? Who would have thought? Crazy. Guys, don't forget to drink something, okay? That's important. Yeah, I'm sorry, I was not even sure if I streamed today. I wasn't sure if I streamed today, but I'm gonna, I want to get things done, so... Yeah. And depending on the answer I get from the other company, there will be also no stream on... Saturday, I think, I'm not sure. Depends on the answer, depends on the answer. Yeah, and Friday I pick SSS streams. And I'm gonna go back to study now, because, I don't know, I hate it, I hate it, but I have to.
Break time... Break time... Umm... I need to write... Okay... Or I forget it... And I'll have to put it in the other thing as well... No, it's not... Okay... I saw, I saw, and now I believe you. I do believe you about the spoon. Hmm, Manju. I do believe you, but if you wouldn't have, have, and... If you wouldn't have any, said anything about the corn, I would not even have noticed that there was corn. But now, I'm disgusted. A lot of kisses for Manju. Ooh, by the way, guys... When I graduate from university, from university, not from VTubing, There will be, um, there will be a small announcement. It's not a real announcement, to be honest, it's just... It's just a small, uh, thing I'm working on. And I wanna show you, but it's not done yet, but I'm excited! Picasisii already knows. She already knows. Um, I told her immediately. Um... Yeah. I cannot wait to tell you. To, by the way, no, no, not to tell you, um, show you. Nothing special, don't get your hopes up too high, but... I'm excited. I'm excited. Hmm, Manju. Excited! Oh, ooh... Aww... Such a cutie, oh, such a cu- oh... I have no hopes, erase the feet stuff to her. What do you mean? It's not too high. It's not too high, 25 is like nothing. Also, we're almost, like, I said it earlier, but we're almost done, I think we have... We have one more. One more to check, and then we can check it. I did not reload in the background, actually, no, here, this last... Oh no! Oh no, that's sad. Guys, don't forget to drink something. Can't always be here, something you need to, like, zoom, it's alright, that's alright. I get like 1K points if I'm lagging. Yeah, that's alright. Al- also, didn't you say you don't want it anymore? I'm pretty sure you said something like that, no? You don't want it anymore. I may like... Sad, we send them one. It's the picture, isn't it? It is the picture. Okay, Manju, I'm gonna do something you will not like. You're gonna hate me, baby, you're gonna hate me, but, but, I promise, it's just one, one print. Manju, Manju, it's alright, it's, it's the printer, it's the printer! Not as, wait, not as much as last. Nobody gets discount. Nobody gets discount. Gonna take a bath, okay, so we get a clean total. And I'm gonna go back to study. And I'm gonna go back to study. My back starts hurting. Could go one more study session. One more study session. And then, I'm not really hungry. Ah, but... Hmm... Do we make, do we, do we take a dinner break? I don't think, I don't think we're gonna take a long break today. Well, not, not yet, after this study. Um... So, yeah. Oh, I don't know how we're gonna do the break thingy. Uh... Um... I don't know if we're gonna do, like, maybe one more study session, and then a big break. It depends on how hungry I get. Let's say, let's say it like this. I cannot, I cannot stay up for long, since I have to get up early tomorrow. Shit, I forgot, I have to get up early tomorrow! I don't want to, I don't want to. But yeah, that's, um, what we're gonna do. Yeah, not stay, saying not too long on the computer today. Um, you wanna come over here, baby? Yeah? Yeah? Oh, come on! Yeah! Come on! Fine! Fine, yes, baby. Such a cutie! Yes, such a cutie! It's okay, baby. It's okay. But yeah. That's the plan for today. There will be probably not an up-break today. Because I ate something that gave me tummy ache to force drink. So I'm very hungry. I'm not that hungry. I'm not that hungry. Um, I'm not toweling with... Ooh! Did you guys hear that? Did you guys hear that? We have someone in a towel in chat. Guys, you have permission to steal Tauro's towel. You have the permission! You have the permission! See you soon, friendpee! See you soon! I'm gonna answer you, I'm... don't... don't worry, I don't... I saw... I saw. I'm gonna answer you. (speaking Chinese) Manju is a very, um... patient little baby. Just chilling on my lap. And being a cute little baby. Yeah! You want to see me naked? No, I... I... Eh, I don't wanna see you naked! Go over here! I don't... I don't wanna see you naked! Oh, by the way, we do not king shame over here, so... Anyone? If anyone... wants to steal Tauro's towel... That's on you. Why is that still in here? Didn't I not delete that? Thought I deleted that. You could take... yeah, for... if they... if they want, they can. I'm not stopping anyone. I'm not stopping anyone. Copy. And... oh, and... Thanks! Ah, now I got color on my hand! No! Yes, I'm working with colored pencils, like a small child. But yeah, I'm gonna see you guys in 25 minutes.
Break time. We're gonna do like at least 5 minute break time. I'm looking for one more source, one more source and everything's done. Well, at least for the sources, everything's done. If we find a new source for something, everything will be done for the sources and I do not have to worry about them again. Which would be pretty cool. Which would be very, very cool. Too many papers. Too many papers over here. Too many papers. Are we driving in a bit? So are we listening? That's alright, don't worry, that's alright. Many paper, yes, many papers is insane. Like only my, only my sources are like... How many pages? 7 pages, no, only, only the sources, 7 pages. That's insane and it does not count into the total. The sources do not count into the total, which is really mean. Really, really mean. I wish it would count in because then I would have a lot more pages. Oh, thank you for the headpad. Is it the infinite headpad or is it not? We will see. We'll see. It's not the infinite. Guys, don't forget to drink something. Let me have your forever, please. No. No, no headpad forever. No forever headpads. No, you can, you can say many please, but it does not, does not work. Just does not work. Does not work. The headpads need a break from time to time, you know? They need a break. They don't work that much, mm-hmm. Because you know there is a lot of energy in the headpad. That's, that's, that's why they, they, they only work for a short amount of time. Mm-hmm. My hair. Are you going to headpad your hand? Thank you for the headpad demon. Will this be the infinite headpad? I don't think so. Looks like it. It's not. Ah! I'm gonna go back to study now. See you soon.
No. You can, you can say "many please", but it does not, does not work. Just does not work. Does not work. The hot pads need a break from time to time, you know? They need a break. They don't work that much, mhm. Because you know, there is a lot of energy in the hot pads. That's, that's, that's why they, they, they only work for a short amount of time. Mhm. But... My hat. Are you going to hot pad your hand? Thank you for the hot pad demon. Will this be the infinite hot pad? I don't think so. Looks like it. It's not. No, no, my hat. I'm gonna go back to study now. See you soon! Break time! Break time! I'm getting slightly hungry. Only slightly. Only slightly. I think... Hmm, I mean... I think... I'm gonna save that. Where do I save that? I'm gonna see... I'm gonna save... And... Then, I'm, I'm, I'm just done for today. Did it save? It did. Cause I'm, I'm tired and I'm hungry and... Well, I'm not really hungry. I'm gonna put you guys on the big screen real quick. Uh, let's see. Out of prison real quick! Get out of prison real quick! I will gonna eat you, Toldo Boy! Not gonna eat you. Not gonna eat you. I have to find something to eat. I wanted to make oat pancakes today... But I... I don't know. I don't feel like cooking. I don't feel like cooking. Probably gonna get myself some bread. Like the true German I am. Oh, gonna get myself some bread. Cooking is nice though. Hi Psycho, welcome in! How are you? We're doing good. Yes, cooking, cooking is good. But I don't have the energy left for it. And I'm... The German in me is telling me it's not bread, it's toast. But I don't like bread! But I don't like bread, so I al- only eat toast. I'm gonna be very disappointing, uh, I'm gonna disappoint all of Germany. Yeah, I'm sorry Psycho, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. But you, you will get used to my hot takes on food. Or let's say unpopular opinions of food. There is, there is a lot of things I do not like. Tiger takes, tiger takes, it's tiger takes. Oh shit, I still have to pack my bag for tomorrow. Do I need to bring food? Probably. She does not like corn or dough. That's disgusting, both disgusting, disgusting! Disgusting! You can go if you can. I got my job trial tomorrow. I got my job trial tomorrow, I will be working for 8 hours. Like a full-time worker, can you imagine? The stream of life is coming to an end, I have to have a real job. Good to the outside brothers, other than October 14th, I was always washed. I mean, I'm bringing snacks, I, I cannot bring a snack, I need, I need real food. But yeah, bread, like, I don't like bread, I don't like it. I also... I'm also not a big fan of potatoes. Come, Manju, my job? Yeah? Thank you Tauro, thank you. I hope I will do good because I want that job, they give me food. They, they put in a job description that I get food. Let me check, let me check again. They put it in... Could, could you please take your feet off my desk, young lady? No. The Germans... I'm sorry Psycho, I'm so sorry, so, so sorry. Where is it? There it is. So I get money, special money for food and I get... Free food, I don't know how else to translate it, but I'm gonna get free food. And I get money for food outside of work. That's very nice. Fries are not potatoes, okay? That's fries. That's very different. I also love chips, but chips are not potatoes, chips are chips, you know? Mashed potatoes are mashed potatoes. If you lea- okay, let's just say like that, if the potato is potato shaped, I'm not eating it. If there's skin on it, not eating it. There is, there is a lot of... Feeling how water fell on the sand right now. What do you mean? Potato is potato, potato is not potato. I like mashed potato, mashed potato is good, especially if you mix it with cheese. That's the good stuff. They are cut into cubes like in Minecraft. Depends, how are you cooking them? Are you, are you pan frying them? Are you cooking them? Are you boiling them? Are you putting them in the oven? How are those cubes being made? It's, it's very dependent on how, um, how they are made. He's not so serious. Yes, that's the only, that's the only discrimination I support, the potato discrimination. Every other discrimination is not welcomed in my streams. But potatoes, we do discriminate. First, make them in nice broth, get the inside nice and soft, then fry the sauce. I would eat that, I, yes, I would eat that. Mm-hmm, I would eat it. But I need some sauce with it or ketchup. Irish and the Baltics will rise against you. They don't have a chance, they don't stand a chance, the Germans get me first. The Germans hate me probably the same amount. Also, we have beer that the outside world likes. I'm not against beer. And if you ever wonder what sounds those are, I'm giving Manju a lot of kisses. I'm just getting all the kisses. Hmm, for me, I like beer, but... But I'm not a big fan of plain beer. No, you won't get a spoiling with your potatoes. What do you mean, I don't get a spoiling? Can, can chat kiss, kiss you? Okay. Hi Hit, welcome back, you just came back in time for the kisses! Beer screen, exactly, I like banana beer. I like cola beer, I like the mixed beers. I drink normal beer as well, but I prefer the mixed ones. But not Rattler. Not a fan. It's always the butt, exactly, it's always the butt, there is always a butt. Astrara Kiddes. What's, what's Astrara Kiddes? What's that? What is that? Never heard of that. Ooh, I also don't like, uh, B&amp;B. Beer with water, disgusting. I was a waitress, I never tried, I never tried it, but it sounds disgusting and they were like the, the people. Uh, yeah, I would like to order a B&amp;B. I was like, wha- what's that? It's Bier mit Wasser? Thank you for the heart pat, thank you for the cat song, thank you for the treat, Manju's gonna get a treat real quick. Here you go baby. Nom 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 nom. I'm gonna kiss myself, how do you do that? Please teach me your secrets, Hit. Teach me your secrets, how are you kissing yourself? B&amp;B, yes. Bier mit spicy Russian water. I have never tried that. But I kinda wanna, I wanna try it. I wanna try it. The Carbran- no, 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 yeah, I thought, that's why I was confused because B&amp;B is, is a car brand for me. Uh, yes, we don't like the car brand either. Only idiots buy B&amp;B. Same goes for Mercedes. Yeah. So salsa, what's salsa? What's that? What is that? We like the Carbran. Listen, there are some car brands that we do not like, just for the fact... By the way, can we change category real quick mods? Um, just for the fact because like the people who drive them? We hate them, they are not good drivers. They are not good drivers. So like, yeah, so they mix salsa with, uh, beer and I was like... You, 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 you order that voluntarily? You want that? And they were like, yeah, yeah, we want that. Thank you Lucen. Um, yeah, we would like to order two of those, I was like... Mm-hmm, I'm gonna bring you the B&amp;B, I'm gonna, I'm... I'm judging you from the inside and my face has subtitles guys, my face has subtitles. You can see if I'm judging people. You can see that. They probably felt so judged in that moment. Uh, yeah, I don't like B&amp;B and Mercedes, not a big fan, not a big fan. Audi is critical, it's... They, they're, they're driving on the line, there's a small line between good cars and bad cars, they're driving on the small line. Yeah, I know B&amp;B sucks, but it's a status quo. It's the drivers that suck and they, they are... Bringing a bad image to the brand. They don't use their fucking blinkers, isn't that hard? Isn't that hard to use a blinker? Isn't that hard to be a nice driver? Apparently, that might be why I said Rattler. It is, it, I judged, I judged those people so hard. I, we didn't even have it in the system, I had to put it under, under special drinks. So yeah. That was the worst drink I have ever mixed. You'll never take a seat in my wood car do you have? What car are you driving, Hit? I have a humble Nissan. Nissan is fine. Nissan is fine, I, I'm, I'm a FOV girlie. With my first car was a Lupo. They, they just have my heart now. Guys, if I could drink something, okay? The Mercedes are good, some of the vans and stuff, mm. Mm, mm. There is this one Mercedes that I accept and that is, I don't know what. It's an old timer by now because my grandpa has it, that's the only one I accept, one of you don't like. Is it Mercedes or is it B&amp;B? Which one is it? Which one is it, Hit? Volvo is good-ish. Volvo I can accept, is, we, what can, like, um... What country is Volvo from? I'm always thinking about the Nordics, but I'm not sure. My first car was a Chevy Corsa 2004, currently it is in Nissan March. You got a new car? Like a one-year-old car? Guys, we have someone rich in the comments, uh, in, in, in chat. My, my car was from 2006. It was pretty old when I got it. It was so old when I got it, but I love this car. The only car I ever wanted is an Nissan GTR. I'm driving a Bima. Sorry, B&amp;B. I'm sorry Hit, I'm so sorry Hit. When I'm rich, you're gonna get a, get a pretty new car that's not a B&amp;B. But first I have to get rich. I drive a bag, I'm not even driving, guys. I'm driving the biggest car, oh, out of all of us and the most expensive car probably, I'm driving in the bus. You guys cannot even compare to me, mm-hmm, I'm going by bus. I'm happy with it. Is it, do you, do, Hit, 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 this is a very important question. Did you have to pay extra for the blinker or was it in the standard? Uh, in der Standardausstattung? Did you have to pay extra for it? Or was it already there? That's important, that's very important. It is the cheapest March by the way standard and it is not even electric at all. Oh, I don't care if it's electric. Extra for what? Listen, BMW Fahrer, uh, drivers? BMW and Mercedes drivers. They, they are too stupid to use blinker, so we all just, uh, assume they don't have them in the standard. So you have to pay extra, but they don't wanna pay extra for blinkers. Or indicators depending on where you're from. Blinker fluid is always empty. Oh, mm, that makes sense, that makes sense. That shit's expensive, right? That's expensive, that's why it's always empty, all cars have, no, not if you have a, a B&amp;B or a Mercedes. Apparently not because they do not blink. They do not do it. So they don't have them, that's just what we assume. Yeah. Also, the more expensive your car is, the less likely, less likely it is you have blinkers. I'm brave, okay, I'm using my... Oh! Okay Hit, I accept you, I accept you as a B&amp;B driver, uh, driver, I, I accept that. I accept that, that's... You're probably the one and only of you ge- uh, of your kind that uses a blinker. That's insane. I believe it when I see it. That's also true. I've no, I've, I've never seen one of them blink, never. And I assume the bare minimum is to have blink. I mean Lucen, you have not been on German roads apparently. They, they look like they have blinkers, but, ooh, maybe? Maybe? Hit, did they tell you you have blinkers? Maybe they forgot, forgot all the other people to tell them that they have blinkers. Could that be the, the reason they don't use it? It could be, eh? I bought it used. Oh? Maybe that is, that is how it's activated. Oh, of course I haven't been on... For, for anyone who, who doesn't know, okay, I'm gonna make it clear, we, they, they do have blinkers, they just don't use them. It's a small joke in Germany, I don't know if that was clear, but it's a joke in Germany that they do not have blinkers. Come with the other cars, drivers are afraid of. Ooh, I, sometimes I see cars that are painted camouflage and I'm like, oh my gosh, there's no car on the street. I didn't know it was a joke. Yeah, it is, it is a joke, it is, it is a joke. I thought, I thought it was, I was, I, I thought it was clear, but it is a joke, it's, they do have blinkers, they do have it, they have it. They do have blinkers. We just make fun of them because they don't use them. So we act as if they don't have them. Now buy a new one unless it's, I'm sorry, they're like, they're so expensive. It's insane. Also showroom, what's a showroom? Oh, that's a pretty one, that's a pretty one, yeah, mm, that, that's one of the few Mercedes I would accept. You're more like tigers who have fake eyes on the back of their... Look, I do have the fake eyes on the back of my ears. Can you see them? The little white dots? I got them. I got them. I love that little feature, it's amazing. I don't know, is it only white dots on the back or is there also black in there? I forgot. I forgot. Because you know, I don't see the back of my ears very often, taking a look, but... Yeah, I, that, I love this little fun fact. It's also, um, I saw like in, in a, in a paper once that they, um... The people that work in the woods, in the forest, where are tigers, um, where, where, where are tigers located? They wear masks on the back of their head to mimic that feature, so tigers think the people are looking at them. I think that's genius and it's so fun, I love that. Usually, oh, why? Oh, then I got it right, then I got it right. They have fake eyes to scare others with more slip. I am, I am the predator. I am the, the, I'm, I'm danger to all tigers. But I think it's probably because of the other tigers, yeah, they, they're stronger tigers, they wanna kill the, the small tigers. Rats can't be... Excuse me? Excuse me? I'm, I'm a predator, roar, grrr. I'm a tiger. And don't underestimate, uh, rats, don't underestimate them. They are predators, they wiped out half of Europe back in the day. Or even more. How much, how many people died during the Black Plague? So I would say rats are predators. Rats may not be prey, but they are... I love rats, I had them when I was younger. I don't know, at least... Where's the knockage? They brought the, mm, the, the illness, they brought it, I... It's actu- guys, it's actually part of my thesis as well. Uh, it's actually part of my thesis as well, how, how, um... Rats are dangerous, woo, dangerous rat. I mean, yes, it's the fleas on the rats, but back in the day, nobody cared about the fleas. back in the day, nobody cared about the fleas, it was the rats who brought the fleas, so it had to be the rats. It had to be. But yeah, I love rats, they're cute. They're cute. Excuse me? What do you mean? What do you mean? Relatives, excuse me? I think it's planned inside job. Oh, just traded by cats to become a higher being. I mean, cats were already a pretty high, highly valued, um, god back in the day. But yeah, it might be an inside job. Manju, do you know anything about it? Yeah, it had to be the cats that also brought them, even though they mitigated the plague from. It worked in Egypt. It worked, yeah, it worked. And now, and now we have them in our homes. And they cannot be alone for like five minutes. They cannot be alone for five minutes. If you leave the room, they follow you, but don't come too close to them. They need their freedom. Did you say cats are dumb? As far as I know, they domesticated themselves, so that's not very dumb, that's pretty smart in my opinion. It's more due to human being dumb enough, yes, yes. Yes. Everything major that happened in the past is probably due to humans being dumb enough. Cats are way too smart. Yeah, Manju? Manju learned how to open doors, so I had to get this little device so I can lock the door, because I don't have keys for that door. So I had to get a little, little, um, device to put under the, um, handle. So she cannot open the doors anymore. Balls on their own. Demon. Don't act like this could not be you. We know it could be you too. I love cats, eh? Yes! Exactly. Cats, uh, cats just try to look cute so we feed them. I feel, yeah, I've seen cats doing weird stuff for instance. Was it, I mean, it was probably an orange cat. Probably an orange cat. I won't fall. I did not necessarily. I mean... I mean, you're watching me, so you cannot that, cannot be that smart. Otherwise you would be watching more entertaining people. Yeah, uh, Manju is Manju is pretty in the middle, um, on the smartness level. I never said I'm smart, I never said that. Chad catching strings. I'm sorry Chad, I love you, I love you, I promise. I love you all, you're my little, my little babies, my Chad. Ah, my, ah, both of my feet fell asleep, shit. Oh, I don't like that. Hmm, not a big fan of that, hmm. I'm not smart, and we know that, we know that, guys. Just remember last stream when I did the country thingy, that you guys are... I'm not smart. Simple fact that we are here means you're rebelling after, exactly. Exactly. Why else would you be here? Like, you guys probably share one brain cell, otherwise you would be in someone else's stream. Anger footrest. I'm said, do you know L from Death Note? Probably you know, know him. That's how I'm sitting on my chair. That's how I'm sitting on my chair. Brains in, then the blades there are multiple. Oh, I mean, you share one brain cell. Singular, not plural. Sometimes same. Pretty sure not only friends is fighting the air force. Oh my gosh, I recently, uh, read an insult, um, like the insults that are funny and smart. Someone was like, oh my gosh, your, your last two brain cells are fighting for third place. Oh my, I thought it was very creative and funny. Has been on leave of absence for a couple of years now. Yeah, I think I lost my brain cell somewhere, I cannot find it anymore, guys, if you find it, please let me know. Smart. My friends keep saying that about me. I mean, are they really your friends if they don't bully you a bit? Like, a funny bullying? Then again, I wake up and make, if my friends. I mean... Oh, are you okay, baby? Maybe I'm coming home tomorrow with a burger, oh my gosh, that would be amazing. Imagine. I'm coming home with a burger. I would love that. I would very much love that. Because if you need to get early. I've not even eaten yet, demon, I still have to eat dinner. It's like 10pm, so it's alright. It's not like I'm gonna go to bed before 1am anyways. And the only good burger place here is done. Oh, that's sad. That's sad, I'm really glad we still have this burger place, because McDonald's doesn't deliver, uh, doesn't deliver anymore to my place. That's really sad, I, I could use some Happy Meal from time to time. But they don't deliver anymore. So sad. I mean, I still need to eat something, otherwise I'm gonna get hungry at like usually 1, 1:30am, I'm gonna get hungry again. Yeah. Our McDonald's has delivery. But, um, since I live at the other end of the city, they decided to not deliver over here anymore. It's really sad. I was probably the only one who, who ordered McDonald's. In the big cities, they, they deliver and shit, but in the small, I'm from a small city, so it's really rare that they deliver, but they do, and do you, oh my gosh, do you know what? I love the cars. The hood, the front, the, the car, that's a, that, that's a little packet of fries. That's a little packet of fries, and, and what's it called, um, the trunk? The, the back part of the car is a burger. Go it, go guys, go and Google McDonald's cars. I'm gonna Google it myself right now, they are so cute. Uh, it shows me the toys, I don't know. McDonald's. Cars, delivery. Oh, the burgers on the front, and the fries are on the back, okay, let me. It's adorable. Guys, it is adorable, I'm gonna run a screenshot. I love those cars so much. Yes, I'm easily impressed. Yes, I am very easy to impress. Guys, go to showroom, look at those pretty cars. Ignore the Ferrari, ignore that. But look at the cars. Aren't they adorable? Yeah, I'm so far off the shot. I'm so sorry. That's sad, that's sad, should have made them all that would be geniuses. Okay, see you soon, Lucen, see you soon. That is freaking, it is, right? It is, they look so cute, I wish I could drive one of those. What, what is going on, Treffy? Huh? Treffy? The small watermelon, and she will be happy. No, no, they're not, I... You don't like the, you don't like the McDonald's car? You don't like the McDonald's cars? They're pretty, they're so adorable. Sushi mini, sushi mini. Oh, hit! Oh, hit! Ooh! Yes. Yes. Guys, if I could drink something. Just rap. What do you mean, just rap? I love these guys, they're so cute. They adore, they're adorable, just adorable little cars. They're so cute, I'm sorry, don't be sorry. As in camera, what do you mean? I don't get that. It was, it was not, it was very necessary, okay? It was very necessary. I need one of those cars. It's just a car, uh, oh, that what you mean, oh. I, I, now I get, now I get. Can you pan around? Oh, do you mean a pan? No, no, of course, it's like stickers and stuff. It's adorable. I love it, I love it so much. And you know what's really, what I think is really unfair? Burger King is also in my city. They also do delivery. Not to my place, though. They never had delivery to my place, which is really sad, because they were closer to me than McDonald's was. That's why I was really sad. But, yeah. That was really sad. And now none of, no, no fast food chain is delivering to me, so I have to, well, I mean there is another fast food chain, but it's a small one, so it does not count. Does not count, but they make good burgers. And I'm gonna work there soon. I hope. It would be pretty cool if I would be working there because I need the money. Yeah. I'm gonna work at the burger restaurant, I'm gonna be a burger flipper. I make burgers, I make pizza, and I make some salads, and what else do they have? I think that's it. Oh, pasta, they also make pasta. You know the place I always order from? That's the place. I'm so excited. One thing I'm not excited about is that I will be sm, like, I smell like, um, a deep fryer. I don't like that part, but... Well. You win some, you lose some. I get, I get, oh, also one thing I hate, they do not serve, they don't serve fries. They serve rusty sticks. So hash brown sticks. I want fries with my burgers, not those stupid sticks. The frying oven comes with. Exactly. See, I'm gonna smell so bad. I mean, I'm already stinky tiger, but then I'm gonna be really stinky. Hit, where do you get those emotes from, this? What is that, what is? I love those emotes. Your hash browns are awesome. They are, but they're not good as, as a substitute to fries, trust me, it can be worse, it can? It's a cat. I, I mean, I see it's a cat, but what? Sour cream. If you say so. If you say so. Plastic smothering, the smell of burnt plastic, just, just stick to your clothes. Oh, okay, yeah, that's, that's bad, that's really bad, I would burn it, don't, don't, don't do that. No, you cannot burn me. You cannot burn me. I forbid it. I forbid it. You smell like burnt car tires, ew, no, I don't want that, I don't want that. You smell like potatoes, and then my server. Listen. Demon. I'm sorry. But that's just, that's just how things are. Can I not work retail? I mean... Retail is isn't that like one of the worst things you could do? Uh, for your mental health? All those stupid customers? All those Karens? I'm really sorry, Psycho. I'm really sorry. Okay, question, do you like sweet potato? Yes. But. But. I do like sweet potato fries, those are good. And I like, I like yakimo. Yakimo. We don't have that in Germany. Germany has the wrong kind of sweet potato. I was so sad when I came back from Japan, I got myself, I got myself a sweet potato from the store, and I made it in the oven, and made it like a nice little sweet potato, it did not taste the same, because it was a different kind of sweet potato. Do you know how sad I was? This is started, started, I made a sheet for that, so far I have, or I'm full back customers, wow, that's... That was one of the things, like, the job center lady was like, oh yeah, what kind of jobs could we, um, send you, um, the, the information to? And I was like, I'm gonna do everything except cleaning lady and retail. Those are the two things I'm not doing. Because my mom and my sister worked in retail. Stories, the stories, mm-mm. Not gonna do that to myself. I'm not gonna do that to myself. Respect to anyone who can do it, I cannot. It's like I don't know. I don't know, how can people lose my new plan to just find a girlfriend and become a boy? I wish you the best of luck. I wish you the best of luck. I hope it works out for you, because that is also my goal. Find a rich husband, so I can be a stay-at-home wife. I would love that. That way I can still stream. And I just have to do, have to worry about me, and my household, and my husband, and nothing more. It's, I mean, it's still a pretty tiring job, not gonna lie, but... Why is my model lagging? Do you see that? It looks like it's lagging for me. It's like, but the thing is, living is expensive. I need someone who's rich, rich, who makes like, I don't know let's say 5k a month. So we can afford to have only one person working. Also, I need pocket money. I would, oh, by the way, I would also be interested in, um, in a pay pig. I think that's kinda intriguing. People getting off to getting controlled with money, like... I mean, give me all your credit cards if you want that. A pay pig. A pay pig, that's a king. Some people have the king that they, um, get, um, very happy, let's just say it, they get very happy. And if they, um, have someone that controls... And if they, um, have someone that controls their money and makes sure they, they cannot spend it. Some people get very happy on that. And that is a pay pig. Or a pay slave. You can also call it that, but I don't like the word slave. You okay, Manju? He's, I'll have to see also. Sorry, it wasn't me that had a lagging. Oh, it's me. It's, it's apparently me that's lagging, so I'm lagging for everyone, apparently. But yeah, I think I need to get something to eat. I need to get something to eat. I'm gonna send you guys over to Viaprica. I'm not even sure if I'm pronouncing that correctly. And my voice is giving up right now? Good girl. I'm gonna go and eat. Gonna send you guys over. Is there a mod here right now? I'm not sure. Is there a mod? I don't think so. I'm gonna do it myself. You grab your message, oh. And then... And then you, you, you know the rules. You know the rules. Copy your message. Say hello, leave a follow. Please leave a follow. She's really nice. She's really nice. Give her a follow, give her some, some hearts. And I will see you sometime this week, I think. Out, though. So, good night, everyone. Night, night.